So, call a meeting to order. Johns?
Here.
Munoz?
Yeah.
Bonetta?
Here.
And Wall?
Here.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna add something to the agenda here.
She's not here yet.
Okay, so, um... We'll put it under unfinished business, I guess, but we'll move it to when she... We have someone that would like to speak to the committee or to speak to the board and present us with something. So, um, we'll put her on as soon as she comes. But I think what are unfinished business from now? Oh, sorry, new business. Oh yeah, what is? Pam?
Pam dates. No, Pam Olson, sir.
From Devil's Fire. Okay. Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve last meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the July 14th annual meeting.
Is there a second? All second. Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yeah.
Bonetta?
I wasn't.
Just wanna abstain. Do you wanna abstain?
Yes, please.
And Wall?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we have anyone wishing to address the audience? Or the audience, recognition of audience, is there anyone willing or wishing to address the board? Okay. Please come up and state your name.
My name is Alana Johnson, and my children have waited for me to go to Nedros this school year. Um, I've been like, thought about this greatly. Um, we started discussing it in April, and I have a wish to continue throughout the summer. My children never changed their minds, they really wanted to go. We toured the schools, we looked at their week's nurses, and me and my husband together decided to have this best interest for them this time, and I'm here to have therapy for it.
Okay. Yes, we have that tuition agreement. Um, we'll address those a little bit later. Um, we'll look to you for, for questions on that, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, um, I think that Pam Olson is here. So, we'll move to that first.
Hi. I'm just here to present the school with its checks.
Um, Ms. Olson, there is a microphone on the end of that table.
Oh god, no, no microphone. Can you hear me? Um, I have about twenty-six thousand dollars I'm donating to the school.
Wow.
Um, these are the proceeds that we have from gaming at Devil's Fire. Um, we just feel like, uh, we wanna invest in our kids' future, and what better way to do it than to school? And so, yeah.
Thank you. That's so awesome, thank you.
I was not prepared to come here today, so please disregard my look.
Just to kinda give a little bit more information, the football team, Coach Kennedy receives, I believe, five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The volleyball team, close to five thousand six hundred dollars, is that right? Approximately. Uh, the baseball team for their aggregate for the field, six thousand dollars, and then, uh, the gym equipment for, hopefully for cardio equipment, ten thousand dollars. So, I think it'll benefit every high school and junior high student.
We can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah, that is incredible, thank you very much, so.
And thank you Jenny, Jenny also was the one that advocated for the school.
Oh, thank you Jenny, yeah.
So, but thank you guys, I gotta go back to work.
And just to follow up that, I would like to do some kind of, uh, better thank you. Um, I think Coach Kennedy has a couple ideas and, uh, possibly even, just because it is an enormous donation, possibly getting the newspaper or the news, something involved like once practice kicks off for all the sports minus baseball, obviously, but, um, just to get a little more recognition, because I feel like that's absolutely wonderful.
I think that's a great idea. Um, I'll leave it to maybe the head coaches of each sport then to work with. Who do you think, Hugh or maybe athletic director?
Yeah, I already talked to Mr. Hallford about recognizing.
Perfect.
And just one more thing, sorry, Sarah's husband, Levi, also, he works at Morelly's and he does those big beautiful banners, so he has already signed up to help us with those, so we can.
Wonderful. Thank you, yes, that's awesome. Okay, um, is there faculty who would, or a student who would like to address the board? Alright, then let's move to the superintendent.
Okay, I have a few things for you. First of all, um, I applied for a small rural school's achievement grant, and we're gonna receive eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, and that will be pretty much used for salary. So, we did receive that grant. The next thing I have is that every year that we apply for title funds, it's called the consolidated app, and, um, this year we're gonna receive eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. We're gonna combine, um, all the titles together, that's what we've been doing in the past. So, Title I, Title II, and Title V will add up to the eighty-nine thousand dollars. What I need to do is have you, as a board, approve the application to get this money.
Sure, do we have the application?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's not, it's right here if you wanted to see it, it's eleven pages long, so.
Oh.
So, um.
Oh, yeah. I'll pass the pages down as I get through them. Well, do you know how much we got last year, I'm just curious in relation to...
It was about ninety-three thousand last year, a little bit less, it's based on the free reduced formula, so, I'm a little bit worried for next year because of, all of our meals are free, and so we just really need our, um, stakeholders that still apply for free and reduced lunch, so we can get that percentage up to receive that funding.
In the application, it just has, you know, talking about technology, use of technology and stuff, um, but then you said we're using it for salary, is it just like?
It'd be the Title I salary, because that, we have two positions, that's a, that's a lot of money, so that's what we're gonna use it.
Sure.
Year marked, and that's what we have for many, many years.
Sure, oh, that's totally fine, I just, in the application, it says we're using it for technology.
Yep, but we're, um, yeah, it could be used for technology stuff since we had the S R, it shouldn't have been marked, technology shouldn't have been marked.
No, I mean, it's like a paragraph.
Oh, it just tells us probably what we're using to help. How is that? I would have to see what's.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So, really, that, we got paragraphs, that was the S R?
That was, I was wondering, okay, so you'll take that out?
Yeah, because the S R, we're doing the S R application as well.
Okay, so. Okay. It is consolidated, is it the consolidated?
Consolidated, yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve that, to apply for the consolidated application grant?
Well, you need to prove it, you need to submit the application.
Just to submit the application? With the recommended changes?
Yeah.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yeah.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Anything else?
Oh, I have quite a bit, sorry. Um, last, last month, and we forgot about this until, um, this week, um, you asked me about the sports activity pass.
Yes.
And we did some research, okay? We do have around thirty-two home games between all of our sports. Um, right now, currently, the adult pass is seventy-five dollars, okay? If they wouldn't have a pass and then pay seven dollars for each home game, that would come out to be two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, they're getting huge savings, I don't know if you wanna up that a little bit or not, but that's what we have right now. And then we're thinking maybe fifty dollars for a student pass, because, um, that's less than two dollars a game if they would go to the home games. It's up to you, it's just something to let you know, um, like I said, we have roughly thirty-two home games for all our sports.
How hard is it to track that? Like, let's say, you know, a kid goes to five football games and five volleyball games, is it hard to track?
I'd have to ask my.
Like, I know there's a.
He's not here, Sean's not here. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how hard it would be. Uh, we do get a lot of students, um, from, depending on what school we're playing.
Unless we did the five puncher, whatever punch thing, then someone has to just. That's not a bad idea.
I was thinking that, or if there's a spreadsheet that just goes to the, the gate every time, like they get ten games for your five, whatever you wanna do. If it's easy to track like that, I mean, just a chip mark, but if it's not, then.
I like that idea, like, I think fifty dollars is maybe, um, cost prohibitive, that's what I'm worried about, fifty dollars a student. And so, I like the idea of the punch card, like ten games for twenty-five dollars. I don't know. What are your thoughts?
Hey, I'm open, it's, it's whatever you guys would.
Steph?
Or, you know, we want the students to come, and we wanna, and if students, you know, we've let them in, just, I'm trying to, you know, sports are really expensive. So, if we can cover some costs, that'd be great.
Steph, you have any thoughts?
I don't, because I'm having, um, a really hard time understanding everything that is being said, so if maybe you wanna repeat to me what, um, the integrity of the poll.
Oh, we have, our Sigjet, we're talking about the sports activity pass.
Yeah.
And he was just bringing up what kind of what we talked about before, fifty dollars for, you know, a season, you know, they go to every home game. Um, and so, then we, as a board, were kind of throwing out the idea of a punch card, and I said maybe like ten, ten games for twenty-five dollars. I was just looking for other thoughts.
Okay, um, I don't have any at this time, but, um, I will definitely keep listening and, um, jump in if I wanna add anything.
Okay.
So, you said at fifty bucks for thirty-two games, it's like two bucks.
It's less than two dollars, like dollars each, yeah.
And then if you do the punch card for twenty-five dollars for ten games, it's actually more than the kids would be paying? So, in the long run, would fifty dollars be a better, if you're gonna go to every home game?
Right.
Which I don't, which I don't, I mean, do. That's something that, I think, students do.
I don't know, I would guess not, but I don't know.
I mean, could we just make it really easy and do, it's thirty-two home games, and next year there's thirty-four, so charge them thirty-two dollars for the activity pass? So, they're paying a dollar a game, and then they just walk in and then there's no hassle.
That's fine.
But then it's, see what I like about the punch card is, that is per person, so if I go pick my whole family, I can do four punches or five punches at once.
Oh, I gotcha.
Rather than per person, I'd do fifty dollars per person.
Adults would be different though, adults are.
Oh, right, right, yeah, adults are different.
Is there a family card?
Um, not a family, just adult. Single adult.
I mean, I would go for like twenty, twenty-five dollars, I just think fifty's a lot for a student.
Oh, if you make a motion, twenty-five, or twenty-five dollars is fine. And if they don't buy an activity pass, it's four dollars a student, so if they don't have a pass, it'd be four dollars.
But then it's per person, right? So, it's one percent per pass?
Right, correct.
I think that's, yeah, it's fine.
Just to make up a little bit of dinner. So, I'll make a motion to sell the, uh, sports passes to the students for twenty dollars for all home games.
Okay, um, did you wanna keep the adult pass at seventy-five, or did you wanna raise that?
I don't know.
How many adult passes do we sell any year?
Uh, last year was kind of unusual, we didn't sell many, year before we sold.
Probably sometimes one third.
Oh. I don't, I'm not really a favorite changing, I think seventy-five dollars is plenty.
That's fine, okay. Um, my next item. Was there a motion? Okay, sorry.
Oh, I don't think we need to make a, oh, I didn't, no, I'm not making a motion.
Jenny made a motion to sell the season.
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, you're right, you're right.
There's not a second, but she did make a motion. Unless you second it, so I'm making here. I, I didn't, because I didn't get asked about the adult pass. So, twenty-five dollars, or twenty dollars for, and seventy-five is still considered.
Can somebody please repeat what Jenny's motion was?
Sure, it is twenty dollars for a student pass or four dollars a game for the students to get in.
Twenty dollars for student passes that ground court, all at fifty dollars a year?
Yeah.
Jenny, did you put the other half of that in there, about the adults too, in the motion?
I, I did.
Already said like that. They're not taking it, they're not going.
So, last year we got zero dollars, right? So, I mean, I feel like twenty dollars is reasonable to parents, and at least that's a little bit of income for that.
Great, I agree. Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yeah.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, my next item. We did have bus five in to Wesley's to look at DOT and see what kind of repairs we needed, and just for them to, um, do the repairs that they noticed and not looking into it, but between five to six thousand dollars, I said we're not gonna fix that, it's an old bus, eighty-six. So, right now, I'm in the process of working with Matt Norby at Nedros, buying a used bus from him. Um, it's two thousand eight Thomas, I already had Chuck look at it, it's a good vehicle for what we might have to pay. And, um, just wanted to let you know that we might be buying a used bus for a real reasonable price, um, in the next couple weeks.
Which is real reasonable?
Less than, well, they purchased a sprinkler system that we've had, purchased quite a few years ago, and we're looking at the value of that for the value of the bus, so.
So, zero money exchange?
Yes. So, we're working on that.
Fantastic.
Yes.
And how soon would that be?
Within the next couple weeks, he, he's waiting for, they bought a new activity bus, so he'd like that bus until that, um, new bus comes, and then he'll exchange.
That's fantastic, thank you.
So, the next item, again, on my agenda, I had, um, I just wanna thank Ms. Johns again for getting those donations for our sporting, sports, uh, programs, like I said, volleyball was fifty-five hundred, baseball was six thousand, football was fifty-one, fifty, and then gym supplies were ten thousand dollars, so that's a huge amount, we're twenty-six thousand dollars, so thank you again for spearheading that. Um, my next item is that I've been talking to Rosie at Big Dogs for their, um, gaming, and they're gonna donate eight thousand dollars so we can get our health curriculum this year, and, uh, that is gonna be another huge donation for us. So, they're gonna donate eight thousand dollars for our health curriculum.
Perfect. That's fantastic.
Yes, um, the last thing I have, the Ward County Emergency Management Team contacted me, they would like to use Suri School as a disaster building we have in the past, you know, tornado, whatever, whatever happens, um, they would like to use our facility, and, um, I wanted to let you know, I don't think that we really need a motion, but letting you know that's what they would like us to do, and I would agree, you know, we're here for our community, and so, what I need, if you approve, I guess, maybe we do need a motion to have Nicole to, to sign the paper for.
Yeah, I think we have that before. They had a motion again? Yeah, no, I think it just.
I'll just need you to sign it.
Sign it, yeah.
Okay. And, that's all I have. Oh, no, I have one more. The School Board Association Conference is October twentieth and twenty-ninth. You know, Jenny and Sarah, you'll have to go down there for the new member part of it, and Twyla will get you the times and stuff, and we'll can, if we need hotel rooms, we can get that for you. Um, if anyone else would like to go, let us know, and we can register you.
Is that in Bismarck?
Yes, it's in Bismarck. It's October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Legislation opens September first. But there's a lot of.
I think I'm gonna schedule, I'm having another conference in Texas at the same time. Thank you, though.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, business manager.
I sent off the reports, so the financial statements, I didn't hear any, two notes or questions or concerns from anybody, so.
I, I have a question, and I mean, I probably just need an explanation to go with it, but when it says, um, so like, I'm just looking at the balance sheet, like the equity page. Um.
Are you checking on the, um, activity?
Yeah, I, I believe so, because it's, it would be page two of the balance sheet, and probably page one, too, this is just what I noticed, like the fundraiser equity? Okay, um, I'm just looking at like the cap, the class fundraiser equities, and I didn't notice any expenditures out of any of those or revenues back in. Um, just what, like, specifically the class of twenty-twenty-two, last month it was sixty-four hundred and some change, and this month it's forty-six hundred, and just wondering how that works, like, did they, did they spend something out of the fund in the last month, or, or is there a different procedure?
So, this, a balance sheet that you're looking at is from July, and our year begins in July and ends in June. So, if they would have had any expenditures, it would have been in June, twenty-twenty-two hasn't graduated yet, that's the upcoming senior class.
So, that's the only time that one will change?
Oh, it's once a year?
Once a year, which is unfortunate, because we don't get to see the activity that happens in each one of these during the year.
Yeah, I was gonna, okay, so.
So, you all, so this will, this changed for all of last year's activities, and now this is a new balance, but it may not.
Wow. Okay, so that, basically last year, then they spent seventeen hundred and eighty-one dollars, and I know you're not gonna go that out the top of your head, but that, this is the difference? So, just so I have a general idea how to read these?
They did spend money for prom, that would have come out of the junior class.
Okay.
Last year's junior class, this year's seniors, but I don't remember how much it was roughly, but. That's all I have.
Okay, I'll have a motion to approve the, the bills. The, just for Jenny and Sarah, the bills are the ones under the, is it called expenditure report?
Board report?
It's board report. These are all the upcoming bills, and, and forgive me, you guys already know us, but, um, they have to have our approval before she can pay these.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports and the bills to be paid. I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yeah.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
So, then I, we can cover, um, the tuition agreements, and I did receive a few more, and everybody got them. If not, I do have the originals here, for one, two, and one of three, I believe, were the late arrival.
If not, I do have the originals here, there were one, two, and one of three, I believe, were the late arrival.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how to do this, I think I stay in last month just because um, I mean, I, I understand what it is, these students want to either come to this school from a different district or go to a different district?
Correct.
Is that correct? So I'm, like last month there was one that was denied, is there, how does that work?
So, do we have that policy here? Um, I didn't bring my board policy book. The policy that we adopted says that we should really look at that, um, says that it follows the exact century code. That for elementary students, it has to be um, shorter distance. And if it's a shorter distance to go somewhere else than it is to go to Surrey. Or if it's extreme hardship, then um, we will grant that tuition agreement. If it's um, it's a high school student, if you take those first two and you add on to that, if they previously attended another high school, that is um, reason for us to approve that also. And it's just word for word out of the century code.
Good.
And we were just in background, we were just having a tough time deciding, you know, who, you know, if a student, if everyone leaves, then we don't get that tuition and it's hard for us to better our school. So, we just needed some guidance since we have, we can have a, it's just a follow-up.
Do you go one by one on these then?
We do, can I see, I don't have one oh two, I can't find it, I have one oh one and one oh three. Unless one oh one is with one oh two, like, no.
I have one oh two.
Oh, it says one oh two, but it's labeled one oh one. Oh, okay, then I do have it. Okay, so we're starting with number ninety-seven out. Um, I assume that this person is on the border. Is that right?
No, they live in a district.
They live in our district, but they live.
There is upstream, yeah.
Yeah, there's, so they live in where one side of the street goes to Surrey and one side of the street goes to um, Glenburn. And previously, before we had this policy, we did always approve these, just because it seemed silly to have, you know, one side of the street going and one side of, another going. I don't know if that's what we wanna continue doing, cause that's not what our policy says, so, although it may be under shorter distance, I don't know. Is it a shorter distance to Glenburn? I don't know either.
It says here that they admitted, admitting district provides transportation, so I'm assuming that their bus goes there.
Oh, great, well, sure, yeah, makes sense. Yeah, it'd be extreme hardship if they can't, but um. It may be something where they are actually closer to Glenburn because they live in Deering. I don't know, I think it's probably pretty close. Right.
Well, I mean, taking the highway, it's definitely not, but I know there's that bad gravel road that goes straight from Deering to Glenburn and I would say it's probably a wash. Um, obviously it doesn't show me on this map though. Uh, it's thirteen from, from there to Surrey and then from there to Glenburn, I would say, I mean, cause I know there's a curve.
It is twenty-six miles to Glenburn, well, according to maps.
From here?
From Deering, taking the highway around, so I don't know if there's shortcuts or not, but
Right.
According to this, it's twenty-six miles and one thirteen.
There's definitely a gravel road and it's like a high, highly maintained road too, I mean, I, I would imagine it's a, one of the county related roads even, not even a township, um, that goes straight over and then connects with the gravel. I would say it's probably a halfway point is what I'm saying.
So, I'm not sure that this one is, you know, it may, it may end up where we have to do appeal and we lose the appeal just based on short distance.
Um, and I just, to, and just for the record, um, Glenburn, from Deering to Glenburn is twenty-two miles, from Deering to Surrey is sixteen. So, took it out of there.
Is that taking though, I think we were just talking though about there may be shorter routes that aren't, you know, on the highway, that's what we were wondering stuff?
That I don't know, I can Google, um.
Our bus also goes Deering.
It does it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, well. Just another question, does our policy, is it nine through twelve on the high school, high school and then it's K through, K through eight? Because if we approve it, he would meet the next criteria for a high school student, previously attending another high school. So, I mean, approving it now would automatically approve him for the next one.
Just have to be bottom of your mind.
They do, but under our policy, it would qualify him as approved, because he would have attended, previously attended another high school.
And with this one, there has not been um, any movement, correct, like there hasn't been a, an address change?
Not that we're aware of.
Do you know if he's previously attended Glenburn? He hasn't attended Surrey?
Oh, so this student never went here?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve number ninety-seven, I don't know how you say.
Yeah, number.
Number ninety-seven out?
Is there a second?
I have a question. So like, according to like, how it's written, like, should he, um, does he not qualify?
It would be, if it was a shorter distance, he would qualify, if it's not a shorter distance, he wouldn't qualify, that's for kind of stuff, I don't know how to do this, but.
Yeah.
Right.
Sarah, can we talk to the, like, you know?
Sorry, sorry. Can you hear me now?
And then we'll be able to review.
Um.
I mean, I just counted the section lines here. And it's like eleven or twelve. The way that I've gone before, which is straight up, straight up a hundred and eleven and then you go left, just for like a mile, and then you go straight up to Glen, basically. And then Deering from there is only four miles.
Each section line is quarter mile, is that right?
I'm talking like the, the actual mile.
Wait, you said section line, you said, do you section line as a quarter mile?
I'm counting that, that's like the mile.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Well, I'm gonna second um, Jenny's motion. I think it's, it's gonna be really close and without actually driving each one. I think it's probably gonna fall within that.
Good, so you, did you just second that motion at all?
Yeah, I did.
Could you please tell me what the motion states?
To approve seventy, ninety-seven, yeah, out.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
No.
Bonetta?
No.
Wall?
Yes.
Now we have a tie. I don't know what was the student tie. Well, if that's the, if that's the case, the board president will make the decision, I'll make the final decision to approve ninety-seven out. Okay, number eight, number ninety-eight out, and can we do it with number ninety-nine out or, or?
It's a family.
So we can do it together? Okay, so we'll do number ninety-eight and ninety-nine out together? Yeah, she wants to, would you like to address the board again? Give us some, um, because our policy, our policy states, like I was saying, that it's gotta be shorter distances or extreme hardship to us, to approve it.
I would say neither of those are it, but the Monroe's bus pulls up to the end of Mike Street. They have before school care, um, I don't need after school care, I need before school care, I need to work by seven forty-five. And this is my children's bike, it's not mine, I'm agreeing to what they ask for, their friends go there. They play on a basketball team with those kids, um, not school-related, it's traveling team. Um, then my younger one, she's on a dance team, her dance team friends go there and all of them have relatively one friend, that goes through.
So, if these are the only two rules for elementary, then it doesn't seem like it meets it, so. Do they have a chance to re-apply, like with?
They can apply every year.
I was instructed to go to Ward County after, if you guys don't approve it, I'll be instructed to go to Ward County.
Sure, and that's totally right, um, I think the open enrollment, they are, these are on open enrollment applications. So, the open enrollment period though, doesn't it end in February?
This is the tuition agreement, she submitted an open enrollment paperwork first and I called her into the, so not the curriculum paper. So she did the tuition agreement, that's why we're holding on.
Okay, um, the, but the open enrollment period ends in February, March, March first, so. So for next year, you could do the open enrollment um, with Ned Rose and you just have to have your application in by before March first for the following year.
So if she had her open enrollment for Ned Rose, then that would be completely different, like this would?
Yes, uh, open enrollment is different, if you get it in before March first, um, pretty much it's guaranteed that you can go to their school.
Okay.
If you look at the, if you look at the tuition agreement, I would say, just like the BPI, had nothing would change, they're only listed as zero dollars.
Listed as what, I'm sorry?
Zero. But nothing would change, BPI filled it out as zero.
Are you saying that tuition, right, Ned Rose will get the per pupil payment though, ten thousand dollars?
Per child.
Per child.
How is that?
Every child is worth ten thousand dollars.
Yes, but at the top corner, it says no change.
Right, that means that Ned Rose will not pay Surrey School for tuition.
It says no charge. No, yeah, I'm sorry, no charge. Yeah, that's fine. And then if you do file a open enrollment with the deadline, you only have to do that one time. Yes, like. Yes, I'm a little confused because this is exactly how Mr. Arby told me to do it.
So, following the art of the century code, I will make a motion to deny number ninety-eight, ninety-nine out?
Is there a second? All second. Number deny, number ninety-eight and ninety-nine out.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, so we have um, number one hundred in.
Uh, and she already goes to this school, is that right?
No.
No?
No, she did not.
We don't have a policy for um, admitting students, we usually accept those, ignore the outs that we're concerned with.
Oh, I just thought.
Yeah.
This name sounded familiar, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve one hundred in.
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, number one oh one in.
Um, I'm happy to see this one back, I don't know if we give our opinions, but uh, I will make a motion to approve number one oh one in.
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, moving to number one oh two out. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on that one? Okay, um. There's not a reason listed or?
What's the address of this person?
They live in our district.
So, I guess with no information, I will make a motion to deny one oh two out.
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
And then we have number one oh three out. This one, um, do you know where he has attended school before?
He goes to school here.
Oh, he goes to school here?
Last year and previously.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this one?
So, there's a dividing line in Deering, do you know which side this?
He's on our side, yes.
And he's previously gone to school here?
Yes.
And number ninety-seven never went to Surry's Ercic? Have you had the situation before, like what was your note?
Our policy is around here. So previously, we've always just approved the Deering ones before we had that policy. We just didn't really have a policy for approving or not approving. But I think we might run into that same problem where they actually might win at an appeal just based upon shorter distance. If they can prove there's some way to get their figure.
I almost couldn't, want to do our hard work, but I didn't, what happens if we deny this one, then they can appeal it?
They can appeal it to
To the county?
To the county commissioners, yeah.
And then how does that normally turn out?
Well, we've only had two appeals, and we lost one, and one they decided to, um, go to private school. I guess I just think that so we don't end up getting in a mess later on, I would just stick by what it says, and if they appeal, then they appeal.
I also think that this kid is probably old enough to make a decision like this, so, I mean, if that's where he wants to go, and
And you said he did go here last year?
And this one, we, um, do we know if there has been a change of address?
No, there has not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the other thing about it is that if they have a change of address, they can automatically, it has to be automatically approved, so.
That would be on a tuition or a open enrollment hassle.
Oh, that would be on open.
That's what I'm believing.
Okay.
How quickly is the process to appeal it? Like, I mean, the school starts?
It won't happen before school starts next week, I know that. Because they gather information, and they give each party term to gather their own information as well.
Does it cost the school money when they do that? Ten thousand dollars, or just over ten thousand?
Like the appeal part?
Oh, no, the appeal eleven.
No.
There's a three member group meeting on the appeal.
Well, I'll just make a motion due to what I'm assuming to be shorter to equal distance, um, approve one oh three out.
All second.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
No.
Banana?
No.
Wall?
Yes. And then with that tie, I'll make, what's that?
I don't understand why it's shorter.
Because they could take a different route, more than what Google says, you know, take the highway. They could.
Prove to backtrack like eight, I'm sorry to interrupt you, eight miles bare minimum by taking the highway. But I know there's a shorter way.
Is this back road always truck? You said it's out like in the winter time, is it travelable?
There's two very wide, actually, there's two available roads. I don't know.
Sure.
Deering's on sixty-eighth street, um, Lember is on seventy-fifth, you can take twenty-first avenue north to seventy-fifth. There's a correction, and, uh, Lember is between twenty-third avenue and twenty-fourth avenue northwest. So that's about eight miles, plus the eight, you're looking at about sixteen miles.
So it's almost equal distance to Surry. Thank you very much, that's, that's very helpful. I think then, yeah, if it being a tie, I will, um, make the decision and approve number one oh three out. Okay. Anything else? Okay, principal?
Mrs. Hampton? All right, couple things to talk about here, um. We applied for and received, um, it's called the Best in Class Grant Program. Um, it was for preschool. There was twenty-six, um, well, daycares could apply, preschools, school preschools, a lot of different things could apply, but they awarded him to eleven, or to twenty-six, um, entities in the state, and we were one of them. Pretty lucky to get it. It's a sixty, sixty thousand dollar grant. Um, like I said, it's a, it's a new thing. You've probably heard a lot on the news lately about the preschool and all that, it's, um, preschool is becoming under the direction of Department of Health rather than BPI, so it's kind of a whole switch up. So we had a meeting the other day, and like I said, we're the pilot, one of the pilot cohorts, and and honestly, the, like I told Mr. Gertie, there, there were so many questions that they honestly didn't have answers quite for yet, and they said we truly are a pilot cohort, because they're kind of trying to get it figured out too, but, um, you know, as with any grant, there's, there's hoops we need to jump through, and I did print up information for you guys, but um, a lot of things we can use it for, um, parental involvement, curriculum, materials, salary, a lot of different things we can use it for, so. So anyway, pretty excited that we were.
That's wonderful. Yeah, yeah, that's great. Thank you very much for applying for that.
Yeah. And then the other one we wanted to talk a little bit about tonight, um, North Dakota got a grant, and I think they ended up, uh, was it say like twenty-two million dollars, twenty-three million dollars, um, through the Health Department to help set up, um, weekly testing, weekly screening for COVID is part of the thing. But what we can use this grant for, if we decide to be part of this program, you can use it, and you've got the handle there, you can use it for a number of things, the testing kits, the we could actually hire someone to come in and help do testing. We did it last year. Um, don't want to do that full-time again this year, so that's something, but the big thing, the big push for it is, um, whether it be school or sports, right now, if we have a kid go out positive, we're still back to the, you know, we might have to quarantine a bunch of kids and get them out. If we, in this program, I agree to this, if someone goes out positive, the other kids can still stay in as long as they're symptom-free, and they agree with parental, um, permission, agree to be tested every two or three days. They can stay in school, stay in sports. That's the, the big plus behind this, rather than sending kids home, so.
I thought the mandatory quarantine had gone away though. I thought legally they have ended it, where they can't mandatorily quarantine you.
You, everybody I've talked to has a different thing. There, a lot of it's, if there's, if there's asymptomatic, maybe, but if there's any symptoms and they're still highly, highly suggesting you quarantine, um, there's, there's just a lot of, we sat through a conference the other day, and I don't know, a hundred different answers to every question, but I, I guess that was the big, the big push is you know then you're not gonna have to send these kids home. Keep them in school, keep them in sports.
And so this would be just, um, it wouldn't cost us anything?
No, it's, actually, it's, it's a, they'll even reimburse for some of the things we did last year.
Okay.
But that's, that's the gist, is that you have to agree to do, and it's not mandatory. I mean, we can't say we're gonna test your kid. It's a volunteer, parents have to agree. I mean, it's, it's all voluntary, so.
So what other, so besides athletes, what other kind of testing are you suggesting, or? Teachers, staff?
Yep.
At, at, you know, if I'm not feeling well, I can say I want to be tested for COVID? Or is this something where if I call in sick, I need to be tested for COVID? Do you know?
As an employee?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the answer to that, because most of these testing is, it's not, it's, you have to be asymptomatic. If you're already, you have symptoms, they're kind of saying then you should go to the doctor and get tested. This is more the, what do you want to call it, the preventative testing, or the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, staff would be, you know, we did staff testing last year, once a week. Um, same kind of thing, if one of the kids in your classroom ends up positive, we can keep that teacher working if we test him every few days. Keep the other kids there too.
So pretty much we're like, so if I'm a teacher and one of my kids tests positive, would I, in order to maintain work, I, to come into work, I would have to agree to that, agree to test?
Again, uh, they're so vague on the quarantine things that I, I don't honestly know the answer to that right now. And it could change in three weeks, if you have a positive in your classroom. I don't know right now what they're gonna do about quarantine, but, um.
But would we allow them, with the, if we accept this program or do this program, are we saying yes, you can come to school as long as you take a test every day?
As long as you're asymptomatic and you agreed to be tested every two to three days, you can be in school, or be in sports.
But otherwise, we're saying you might not be able to be?
You might not be able to, yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it was very interesting. We sat at a meeting the other day, and, um, it, it was at the Ram Pora, and it was, you know, meeting as usual, and the buffet lunch, and everybody touching everything else, and then the next speakers after lunch were the Health Department. And they came in masked and gloved up and not touching, so I don't know, you know, I don't know what's right and wrong. But I do think this is a really good opportunity for us to keep kids, keep kids playing ball and keep kids in school, teachers working, and, yeah.
But it's, it's not mandatory?
No, no. No, and like I say, it's, it's something we'd have to have parental permission. We'd never, never test a kid without, and it's, it's the, um, there's different kinds of testing. You have the thing there, but it's the, the binax testing, like we did at school all year, where just rub the swab. Um, there's, there's actually a spit one now, but that one has to be sent in, so that's, um, it's good in the long run, but kind of not beneficial for the things we're looking for, because you wouldn't get results for, you know, maybe three to five days. But the, um, the rapid one is fifteen minutes. That's what we did all, all spring with staff, so. Anyway, for your information, something where.
So do we need to approve or not approve, or is that right?
An approval for it?
How much money do we receive, or is it, is it like you get a payment, you submit a?
It's a reimbursement more of a thing. If you, you know, they'll pay for the kids. If we were to hire a COVID person to come in and do testing, they will do reimbursement for that salary, yeah.
Staff? Do I have a motion to participate in the program? Or to a motion to say that we don't want to participate in the program? Staff, did you get what was going on?
Sorry, I need to move on. Go with that nickel.
Did you understand what she was, could you hear her? The program?
No, not one hundred percent of it, I didn't.
It's a program where, uh, we would be reimbursed for testing supplies for, um, COVID. And then it would allow students, so if a student on an athletic team or, um, would test positive, then the rest of the players could remain playing as long as they would agree to be tested, you know, every other day or so, and remain asymptomatic. And then, um, it would also allow for teachers to keep teaching as long as they agree to keep, to, um, get tested.
I think the main question is, your question, um, is it mandatory anymore to be quarantined? Is it mandatory to take everybody down with you?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's not.
I feel like this is actually gonna maybe do more harm than good, the way I'm doing it. Like if they're forced to get tested?
That's not a real option.
Just not? Like if you're sick, just stay home, like, I don't know.
Can we table this? Or is it, do we have a decision?
So, I mean, I don't think it's gonna go away right away, but, um, we just need to let them.
So like roughly, like how much would be reimbursed? Like, how you said you'd get reimbursed if, for the test kits and all that stuff, was that in here?
Um, the test kits.
So is this something that we would make mandatory, or is it just an option that's available there for parents if they choose to have their children tested?
It's, it's available, it wouldn't be mandatory, no. And I don't know the answer to the length of the time for the reimbursement, that'd be a question we'd have to ask.
But then, if I understand correctly, so if we make it optional, but if they opt out, then they couldn't play, is that correct? That's what I'm, I think that's what we're concerned about, is that if it, if a student on a bas, if an athlete on a basketball team tests positive, and then he or she, um.
Says that they were in contact with these people on the team?
Right.
And they opted out not to test, then what, they're quarantined?
Then the whole basketball team is gone, or anyone who chooses not to test would be gone? If we participate in the program? That's what, I guess that's what we're concerned with.
I don't, I don't think the program one where the other has things to, but I, I don't right now know the answer to the quarantine thing, because it's,
but you don't think the program has anything, has, I, I feel like the program is dictating that. Is the program not dictating that, you don't think?
Well, that's what you said.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Well, well, she's saying that the program is telling us that if a student in football tests positive, everyone else will be quarantined unless they voluntarily test every other day, and then they can continue to practice. According to them, that's what they're saying? That's what, yeah.
I guess I would like an answer to that.
Or even if a kid just had a head cold, I mean, there's so many symptoms. So if a kid comes to practice with a cough, are they gonna be told you either need to go test or to practice, or you can't play and practice?
Well, there again, it, it's the same as what we were told with the other testing is those are the ones we don't test, are people with symptoms. You need to be asymptomatic for tests, but if you want to table it, I can find some more information. Um, I know there's a webinar I can send you guys a link to, um, you can go through it and watch, but we can try and get some more, it's, it's kind of gone, goes through the, our local, um, REA. So I can maybe, maybe even have him come to a meeting, or visit with him a little bit, see if he'll come to the next board meeting, and do that a little bit too.
Yeah.
And maybe in a few more weeks' time, we'll have a little better information too. So many of these programs are just getting rolled out right and left, and there isn't a lot out there to really hang on to yet, so that might be more information by then.
Okay. Do, do we need a motion to table it? No? Okay, we're gonna table that then. Thank you for giving us more information. Okay. Um, do you have anything more? Mrs. Hampton? You know, actually, I do have one question for you, just talking about the COVID program. I've been approached by several parents, just asking, are parents allowed in the school this year? I assume that they are because that, you know, because we're doing that, um, back to school night, but I, I just wanted confirmation of that, or? Yeah, I guess it's.
It's like any other place right now, if it's open again, and.
Back to normal, unless something else changes, but okay, go ahead, thank you. Okay, then we can move to unfinished business. Okay, we all should have received the survey results for the handbook. So the two items that we tabled were um, students in grade seven to twelve may be failing no classes compared to no more than one class is what it was previously. That was one area we tabled. And the other one that we tabled was um, on that same page, juniors and seniors who have a D or lower in any class are required to work as an intervention teacher during their off hour. They will not be able to leave the school during non-class time. The addition of that under attendance guidelines. Um, the survey, if I remember correctly, on the failing um, no more, to cha-, the change to no classes was like a sixty-seven percent um, opposed. Does that seem right? Is there any discussion on that?
No, I agree with that.
Um, so we do have to do a first, you know, because we haven't had a first reading on those, approving of them. So we either have to approve those per, or do not, or don't approve those changes. But the first one, students in grades seven to twelve may be failing no classes to retain eligibility.
So just correct me if I'm wrong. I think we did a first reading and anytime between the first and second reading, you can make changes. And then you can approve the second reading. So we approved it as is, but I think the changes will come now, right?
Oh, I don't, oh, did we actually approve all of them? I thought we approved everything besides these two.
It was, the motion was to approve all of the suggested changes on the items presented.
Oh, it was, okay.
With the exception of eligibility.
With the exception of eligibility. Okay, so it's just the. Okay, so that, just that first one, we need to have a first reading on.
Um, okay, so I'll make a motion for the, to approve the first reading of the seventh through twelfth grade failing no more than one class? Or to leave it the same basically? No change?
Oh, so you want, you're not approving the change. You want to disapprove the change or you want to accept the change? Okay, so this is the old policy. They did an old policy that no more than one class. The new policy is like, you don't want.
I want to read it the same.
You want us to break, so not approve the policy change. Okay.
That's what the parents said, right?
Yes. What was the percentage of parents? Uh, did you say? I'll do it for you right now. Twenty-one plus eighty-nine. Fifty-seven point six percent. So I'd leave it as is.
The only reason I'm saying that is it's very easy at the beginning of a order, anything like that to get behind, not even behind, but do horrible on a couple of sentences in a row and then all of a sudden you're out. So.
I did have several parents reach out to me that they were really not in favor of the change. Um, and then I um, did read one of the comments too that said, um, that they said done, had done previously. I don't know if that's true. It said it had been done, this had been done previously and it was changed um, within the same school year. Is that correct?
Wasn't the same, same school year, but yes, we did have that policy a long time ago and then um, we changed it.
I think that hits home for me that we tried it, we decided it didn't work. Um, so I'll second your motion.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
I'm sorry, before I answer that, could somebody read me what the motion stated?
Uh, I made a motion to leave it exactly how it is with no change.
Okay, I think Jenny might be too far away, so maybe, I've been hearing the call entirely really good.
She made a motion to um, leave the policy as it is to not accept the change.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I agree.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes. Okay, so that leaves the rest of the handbook. I think that we um, probably need to look at these maybe a little bit more to start with the beginning again for the second reading. The very first one, do you have it? No? Do you have any more copies?
Do you have any other copies of the policy?
I can share this. Um, the first one is a maximum absence rule. A student will not receive credit for any classes in which absences exceed six per class for one semester, except for absences that are listed under the excused absence list. Excused absences are medical appointments, family emergencies, funerals, government appointments, school-sponsored activities, or post-secondary school visits. I did hear from Daniel, uh, the other board member. He was not in favor of this change.
Or at least adding sick illness to it. I, I think that was our discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah, I have to agree. I mean, with everything going on, we don't want to encourage people to come to school sick. Although I, I think that maybe this um, defeats the purpose of, of putting this in there is that, you know, kids are calling in sick when they're not sick. I don't know the right answer for this one. But.
How does it read currently?
It doesn't have.
Any of that?
Yeah.
Broken down at all?
It doesn't. It um, it says here, excused absences, is Surri, it, Surri Public School recognizes three types of absence.
Um, I guess for me, speaking about um, the policy change as far as attendance, I, I, I think it's a, a good policy as far as um, the amount of absences because I can only imagine how many parents have called in for one of their children when they weren't really sick or um, you know, maybe they went out of town and, and called them sick or whatever the case may be. And I think that, yeah, they're really that ill that they've missed this much time, we would have doctors to back that up. That's just my two cents.
That's true, but, but, I mean, after the first day, do you take them immediately to the doctor? Not normally, I guess.
Yeah, the thing is like, I've had my kids home for five days because they've been sick. And then, so that's five days and then if we have anything else going on, now they have to stay up for school.
I think that there may be minimal people affected in a negative way, but I think the majority um, protected in a positive way. Um, I, I would say that the people this would affect negatively are probably minimal. And I mean, the people that have legit um, excuses or reasons to not be at school, I think it, there will be minimal. I think the majority of the people um, that it, that it may affect probably are, it's just probably a positive thing about them. They may not think it's a positive, but I mean, for our school to get them into the classroom, I mean, I want people to stay home if they're sick too.
I'm just thinking of like a normal job after three days normally, and a personnel policy manual, it says that after three days, then you have to produce a doctor's note. I mean, can we add an item here? The three sick days, give them three sick days per semester? Anything?
I think that sounds more reasonable than no sick days. I mean, technically they get sick. I just, I just worry that something happens. And I mean, you're visiting a college for three days and then you get sick for four days and now you have to make up, you know, forty-five minutes per class you missed. So really you have to go to school a full day.
We'll also encourage those kids who aren't really sick, maybe actually go to school.
Right.
I mean, we could make it after, after one day, after two days even, or just do the um, maximum of three sick days per semester.
Well, it says in here, an extended illness condition will be defined as one that is three days or more in which a student is either hospitalized or under the direct order of medical personnel. Does that really, doesn't that really say then that as long as you have a doctor's note, then it becomes excused if it's longer than three days? Is that how you read that?
Mr. Halford, can you speak on that, please?
The part that says, an extended ill- illness condition will be defined as one that is three days or more in which a student is either hospitalized or under the direct order of medical personnel. Does that mean that it becomes excused if I'm gone, gone longer than four days and I have a doctor's note? Or longer than three days and I have a doctor's note?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Then I think that makes more sense. That's really given you three days. So I'd like to approve these one by one, just to make things easier. There's several changes. So I'll look for a motion to either approve this on the second reading or not.
But to, just go back to that. It does say an extended illness condition will be defined as, but then does it talk about it later? It doesn't technically say that that's an excuse.
Um, let's see. I think it did.
Good copy. You have Jenny actually, like I had red and green stuff in there before. And I've started with the red so I can work on getting the index correct. And so, it was my, I guess it was my understanding that maybe I read it wrong. I thought you threw everything for the first three things, so I guess this is all looking at, so I follow that.
So that's why I.
So the red stuff's out of there, yeah, so it's not going to be there for.
I think the, I think it's the sentence before that that says the only exception will be an extended illness slash condition or family urgency. And then it defines that as far as them, there you go.
Okay, so if you just add under the, where you itemize them out in front of family emergency, if you do have the extended illness, then I'll make a motion to approve that. Cause I mean, they lump them together in this, but not on this one.
I think that makes sense. Is there a second for that?
I second it.
Okay, so this will be on a first reading because we're changing it? Is that right?
Nope, you can change in between the first and second.
And so we're through the second? Oh, okay, sounds good.
So where are you adding the verdict?
Under the second bullet point where it says family, family urgency, adding on to that second, or extended illness.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes. Okay, the next page, uh, students that are involved in school-sponsored activity will be considered excused. I think there's a typo in there. Considered excused. Instead of present for classes missed as a result of the activity. Motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the sentence that is? Yes.
Of what? This second part where students that are involved in a school-sponsored activity will be. Brad, I think we need another copy. Oh, I didn't, I didn't even get to know.
I, no, I just, I just would like to pass it so you know whenever it's seen in a minute, so.
Makes sense.
But you could go ahead and cover a second handle.
Okay. Uh, is there a second on that motion then?
I'll second that.
Johns?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Bonetta?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes. Okay, the next one is um, students in grades seven to twelve may be failing no class. Oh, we did this one on the first reading already, so I guess we can't do the second reading right now. Um, students failing one class will still be allowed to attend practices. Do we, do we need to add that? Because now they, they're not, they are no longer ineligible. So do we need that sentence? Or you want to keep that sentence in there or add that sentence as an addition?
Has that next sentence always been in there? Students failing more than one class must attend college school tutoring sessions?
Yes, yes.
No, if we can take that green one.
Is there, are you making a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to review.
That sentence, students failing one class will still be allowed to attend practices?
Yes.
Is there a second?
What was the motion?
To take out the. To take out the new sentence that says, "Students failing one class will still be allowed to attend practices." Just because it no longer applies since they can still, you know, play, participate in the sport. Do we have a second? I thought you seconded it, right?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Oh, it goes to-
Yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, "Juniors and seniors who have a D or lower in any classes are required to work with intervention teacher during their off hour. They will not be able to leave the school during non-class times." This is the other one with a survey. And this was just the opposite as far as approval, or- So, from the survey, about fifty-seven point eight percent agree with the proposed change. There were several comments, um, that I agreed with, saying, you know, as long as it's productive time, which I think that's what I want to be assured of too, not detention.
Yeah, is there a teacher available, or somebody available at that time?
I've been working on a plan about, at least one teacher covering it, and then they'll be accessed for some, you know, specific needs.
Great. Is there a motion to approve or disapprove of?
That's the one I put on the board?
Sure.
On that one, um, I have a hint where you're coming from, but what if the kid is failing Spanish or shop? Or if they're not, he's in the help, so that it is just a detention.
That's a good point.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I only heard part of it, can we say it?
What if, what if the kid is taking Spanish, like, me, I try to take Spanish, I fail Spanish part. There was a teacher who may be able to be in there to help me with Spanish or a vocal shop. A class that's not now English.
Right, right. What we're finding-
It's just another detention.
Right. What we're finding, for the most part, and, and not every case, but for the most part, it's not that the kids aren't getting it, it's that they're not getting the work done. So it's, that's kind of our first defense, is an opportunity to get some of that work done. If we do have those kids who just aren't getting it, then yeah, we're gonna find a way to send them to that teacher or get that teacher in there for a few minutes to help. But that really is the, the crux of it, is they just aren't getting the work done.
Well, I see that, but if you're still gonna have the kids in the special classes that they don't need to graduate, they might not be able to get it, and then it's just a punishment for them.
I agree.
I agree with what you're trying to do, I just think it should be on the fourth class of the form.
I mean, I, I completely agree with what he just said. Um, if it said F or lower, and then for only the required classes? I mean, not your electives, I would agree with that.
That's interesting. Yeah, cause there is anyone else that could teach, I mean, it's highly unlikely you'll find someone else to teach Spanish or shop. Band.
But having a low grade in those classes is still going to affect, you know, like GPA.
Are they called core classes or?
What would the core classes be called, like, non-elective classes? What would the core classes be called, like the non-elective classes?
Yeah, it'd be your math, your science, your Englishes.
That's what they're called, is core classes.
Core classes, okay, that's what I was trying to say.
So could you word it just classes that you need to graduate?
Core, core, we said we can use that word core.
Okay, is that? You don't need to say salary language to graduate?
I'll make a motion to kind of follow what the salary, I mean, not salary, the survey said. Because I still kind of disagree with, anyways, uh, juniors and seniors who have a D, um, who have an F or lower in any core class are required to work with an intervention teacher during their off hour. They will not be able to leave the school during non-class time.
Okay, so that's two changes, changing from a D to an F, and then adding that word core. That's your motion, right? You made a motion, okay. So I'm looking for a second on that?
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Um, page eight, "The new Stop It app is available for easy reporting under the bullying. You can find more information on the app or by going to school website." Do I have an approval, or a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the two B.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, the next one would be card playing, to remove the disal- disallowing cards being played on school grounds. Removing that policy, is there a motion for that? Yeah, cards, like playing cards.
I think I have that one, but I have, they don't want to take the cards.
Yeah, they don't want to take the cards away.
I'll make a motion to approve the card playing policy.
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, detention. Um, removing when detention will be held, Monday through Thursday, three fifteen to four fifteen, and designated detention room. To lunch detention will be given for disciplinary reasons and will be served in a lunch detention room. Students will eat lunch and sit quietly, students will not be allowed to work on homework or visit. Cell phones will be turned in to the lunch detention supervisor. No bathroom breaks will be allowed during lunch detention. Lunch detention can only be given by the dean of students or the principal. Any discussion on this?
How long is lunch detention? How long do you get? Twenty minutes?
So like, go to the bathroom before and after, right? Like, they're allowed, there'll be time to do that?
What?
To go to the bathroom? Okay. Do you have a motion on this?
It does say no bathroom breaks will be allowed during lunch.
Yeah, so they have to go to the bathroom before or after, right?
And what was it before? It was just in the classroom?
It was after school, three fifteen to four fifteen.
Oh, okay, so it's almost better?
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the detention change.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Did you say Munio?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, yes.
Banetta?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, the next one, "Students who receive a pink slip will be unable to participate in after-school activities for the days they are removed from class. All classroom work will be completed on regular classroom schedule."
Is this the one that we had comments on?
Yep, this is the right, this is the one.
Yeah, last one.
So, there's concern that, um, this maybe will give too much, um, that they'll be consistent, because maybe one person gives detention, or gives pink slip more, another teacher doesn't. Along with the fact that, is it three absences and you don't even get, you're kicked off the team?
Yeah, and the athletic policy, they have one unexcused practice, the coach decides the punishment, two unexcused practices, they miss the next game, and then three unexcused, they're off the team. And that's just in our athletic policies. So this would result after three pink slips, or getting kicked out of class three times. So, I mean, once, once they get that second, well, second pink slip is three days out of class, which means three days out of practice, they're off the team. And so, I mean, as a teacher, not even as a coach, as a teacher, um, I don't want that responsibility. I don't want, like, if I punish a kid in my classroom, I want it to stay in my classroom. I don't want to be the reason that kid got kicked out of team, because they're still kids. And in their mind, I'm the one that kicked them off the team, right? Even though it was their behavior that did it. That they're not gonna come back to my classroom and behave for me, sorry, especially since they just got kicked off the team because I gave them their second pink slip, you know what I mean? So I mean, even as a teacher, I don't want that responsibility. And as a coach, I know the coaches aren't here to talk about that too, so. I mean, I think we're giving a little bit too much, I don't know if I'm gonna say it. I don't think the teacher should be deciding what happens in extracurricular activities. Because even then, it could lead to students purposely getting other students kicked out of class or getting a pink slip, just so they get more playing time. I mean, it could lead up to that even, at some point. So, I mean, I sent you guys an email with a lot of different reasons, so.
No, I appreciate that very much.
Mm-hmm. So like, what are, what are the kids getting kicked out for? Like, just like talking, when they're not supposed to be?
Just about their behavior. It depends on the teacher.
Well, this might surprise some of you, but I got kicked out a lot when I was in class. And if you took away my sports at the end of the day, uh, that was devastating. Or if I would have had my sports taken away at the end of the day, that would have devastated me beyond belief. Because there are just some teachers that you cannot get along with. You disagree, I mean, every, everybody's different, everybody has their own opinions. And if you find a teacher that you cannot get along with, this could cost you your season. And then that affects the parents, the student, and like you just said, the teacher. So, I completely, I'm glad you brought this to light. And then, of course, I would like to just leave this section the same. Oh, and I'll make a motion, unless there's one special. But I'll make a motion to leave the disruptive classroom behavior, pink slip section the same as it was, no changes.
Are you talking about the entire section, or just that first piece that we talked about?
The first sentence? Or the whole, the whole section?
I think we, the whole section.
You're more on the next page, or is this all of my order?
Well, we haven't, yeah, we're really not just on disruptive classroom behaviors, all on one page. Um, so, you do want to leave that whole section as it, is that right? That your motion? And not make any changes?
Or is it just the athlete part?
I want to read it, it also. So, under the following, the third removal, and following the fourth removal, what is the plan for, they'll be removed from class, what are they doing during that class? I don't know, Mr. Hoffert. Oh, there you are. Where, what, what do they do during that time then?
They actually will do regular classroom work, they just won't get to do it in the classroom.
Where would they be?
It just depends on the situation, a lot of times it's in my office.
Oh, okay.
So, there's a lot of office, there are a room available, Mrs. Hampton's there, where we have the students in the house, so.
I think that those pieces, parts are appropriate.
Does this happen very often? I mean, is there a reason we have to have this in the policy?
Depends on the teacher. Some give out a lot of pink slips, some give out a couple of red pink slips, it just depends. Depends on the teacher, depends on the kid, it's just.
I mean, that was a good question. What are the reasons that they're giving pink slips out?
I have, I, I've never, I don't know why, I guess, to be honest with you, I've never seen so.
I mean, is, is, as much as just talking will get you a pink slip?
Mr. Hoffert, maybe you want to talk to that a little bit?
It would be disciplinary based, right? If, if a kid's disrupting the class, and, I mean, we're there to teach the class, that's our goal. If a kid is disrupting other kids' learning, that, that's a problem. And that's kind of what this is designed for. So, I mean, that's never fair. My kid definitely being stood for eating a granola bar. Walking, or it's not like, it's not just, it's, um, a situation.
So I would love to see like a list of, a list of reasons.
Like a guideline the teachers go by?
Yes, to, to approve the third and fourth removals, I guess. Like I said, I almost got kicked out of class every single day, so this would have driven my parents insane, and-
I guess though, you know, so let's say you can't get along with a teacher and you're constantly getting a pink slip, maybe it is better that you're removed from that class, and you're doing the work somewhere else. And that's really all they're doing, is putting them somewhere else to do the work. So you're not, the teacher doesn't have to deal with the student, the student doesn't have to deal with the teacher.
Cause I do think that not all control should be taken away from the teacher. Like, they should still, that's why it would be interesting to know, I mean, is eating a granola bar a reason to get a pink slip? Not in my eyes, but, I don't, it would be interesting to know.
I mean, a lot of the situations just involve what's going on in the classroom at the time.
Right.
I, I don't, I guess I don't know the exact situation, but did that student just go? They just said, hey, no eating, all the law, and stood up and ate a granola bar?
Right.
Well, that might be enough, you know, so. To know with a list would be really, really hard. Like, the kids are great, and things are changing great. I wouldn't have thought of putting vaping in the policy ten years ago, well, now we have to talk about it, it's happened, so.
They'll, they'll pick up a drink, salt, they'll, they'll just hold once, they're about to do it, grab one, then, you know. They want to just like, he's eating, he had a check for us. Just saying, not just this one stuff, it's other stuff.
And it's tough, there's days where I have really bad days, and I don't tolerate as much as I do other days. And so, I mean, it could be, you know, a teacher could be having a bad day and pass out ten pink slips in that day, but that's, you know, happens once every couple of months. But I mean, it's just, you just never know. Kids could be having a bad day, it could be having a bad day, it's just, there's no, there's no rules to, here's what specifically that means. And like, am I gonna do that for every kid? Well, I don't know, like, I just- Well, I don't know, like, I just don't see how this is going to be something that is going to be consistent across the board with every teacher and every kid.
What were you guys going to say?
Uh, Coach Lomner just said, uh, it's a discretion thing. And with discretion, like she said, if I'm having a bad day, this might really upset them, here goes a pink slip. Well, that's not fair to be judged on discretion. Uh, I think if, if, if it is going to be implemented, there needs to be hard guidelines of what constitutes a pink slip and what hasn't.
Are you saying for the athletics or for the third and fourth removals?
No, for the first one.
For the first.
For the first one, okay.
I mean, for all of them.
For, yeah, for.
For the whole pol- for the whole section, I'm assuming, and that's what I would like to see too. Like, is talking out of turn enough to get a pink slip?
Depends on the kid and the teacher. I mean, if it's a legit talking out of turn, but you're asking something that relates to my lesson, I'm not going to get mad at you. But if it's a conversation you're having with someone beside you, I'm not going to pick you out. I'm going to ask you to stop or else I'm going to move you, you know, it's. But there's not a lot of teachers, like, maybe their first step would be a pink slip. Whereas mine would be telling them not to talk anymore, you know, it's just, it depends.
And that changed from classroom to classroom throughout the day, like stuff on the day.
Yeah.
You know, to go, or this teacher is, it's this, well, then I go to the next teacher, things are okay.
I think what you're, sorry, I think what you're talking about is behavior modification. How you, how you change the behavior of the student. Um, how I change their behavior in my basketball practice might be different than how a coach does it, how a teacher does it in the classroom can be different. You've got all those changes and now you're trying to put on a policy. You're never going to get all the teachers on the same page, you're never going to get all the coaches on the same page. There has to be specific guidelines that are going to be able to help in that, in that quest. Because that's what you've got. I mean, if you take the athletic realm out of it, we just want behavior modification. We want that student behaving in that classroom. That's what we're trying to do, but every teacher's going to be different. That's the reason why, every classroom is going to be different. How I do it is going to be different, so that's, that's where everybody's struggling there.
Is there, or did you guys do like a training before you started doing the pink slips on like, what? Or did you just say, teachers, you get to hand out pink slips?
I've been here for, this is year number seventeen, and they were here on my, so, um. And, and you're right, every teacher is different, every teacher handles are more different. There, there are teachers that are better at classroom management than us. It, it just, that's, that's always there.
I mean, even if you didn't have like specific things that you get pink slips for, I, I think that there can be like a certain protocol. Like how you said, you set, you move a student, maybe to sit by themselves, like. Could there be something that way, like, let's try these three things. If this isn't working, then I think a pink slip is valid at that point.
I'm, I'm kind of confused on what we're talking about. Are we talking about removing the pink slips for athletics? If, if that portion or?
No.
I think all the green, all the.
It's not.
Thank you, I think we're kind of discussing all of it.
All the green in the pink slip section?
Exactly.
That's not, that's not. So, I'm sorry, so this is a pink slip just for athletics?
No, no, there's nothing to do with athletics.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because those kids are.
Well, it would affect athletics.
Yeah, it would affect athletics, anything. I don't know, I, as far as, I agree with that first area, I don't think that would need, that should be in there. But I, I'm okay with the following third removal and fourth removal where they're just not in that classroom anymore. But I think we have a motion on the table to take it all out.
I just don't think it's productive. Uh, five days then ten days, are you gaining anything by that? Are you, I, I mean, they want to, if you want to change it to, to after that, it's up to the discretion of the dean as soon as the parent and the superintendent, something like that, um, but. But you're just adding dates, you might as well go on and have a fifth and sixth removal too. And I'm not mocking it, I'm just saying, I don't, that's not a solid.
Ms. Johnson, the previous one, I, I think you got my, my recent one, I believe it all read. Previously, you got one pink slip, those are worrying, your second one was three days. Your fourth one, you were out for the remainder of the nine weeks. The fourth one, you were out for the semester. That's how it was previously in this box. So if a kid, you're one week into the fourth semester or fourth quarter, you're out for the year, you're out of high class, you're out. Now, if you got your third pink slip. So you're actually trying to step this back a little, this curve. So we give them, well, five days is a lot less than a semester or a quarter, so.
Yeah, I guess that changes.
But last year, um, was it up to the students to, they were responsible for getting their homework assignments? They had no contact with the teacher? When they were removed from that classroom?
No.
They, they still had access, um, to all the homework the teacher would give to them?
Yeah.
My son, he didn't talk to the teacher. He didn't talk to him, he was on that, had no peer access, no lectures, no nothing. And that's happening, he hasn't got his third pink slip, one week into the, the nine weeks.
Okay. Yep. So, going one by one then maybe?
Sure, um, so I'll amend my motion to remove the green portion of the first paragraph.
Do you have a second on that? I'll second it.
Johns? Sorry, Lisa.
This is removed.
Hey, I was just going to ask what, um, Jenny asked to take out.
The area says, students who receive a pink slip will be unable to participate in after-school activities for the days they are removed from class. All classroom work will be completed on regular classroom schedule, to remove that. It was an addition.
Okay, perfect. Yes, I mean.
Okay, Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. The second one says, upon removal, students in grades nine to twelve are required to take the semester exam.
Is there a motion to take that out as they have proposed?
I'm sorry, where?
The next one, the next one is red, to take that out.
We don't have. That's not under the pink slip policy?
It's under the pink slip policy. It, it, it is currently in the pink slip policy and it's a, it's red as in to take it out.
Um, I'll make a motion to remove both items in red.
Is there a second on that?
Sorry, can you just tell me what we're moving in?
To remove, upon receiving a removal, students in grade nine to twelve will be required to take the sec- the semester exam. And also, junior high students will serve two hours of detention with the principal. Remove both of them.
Wouldn't that be, um, a weak point anyway because the semester test exams will be moved to the senior seat?
Right, that's why we're, we're sure that I approve it, yeah. I'll second that.
Johns?
Yep.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
I'm going to do the next ones together, following, replacing the following third removal and replacing the following fourth removal policies with the new, with the new suggested policies. Is there a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve the third and fourth removal amendments.
Is there? She's, she's seconded, Sarah did.
Sorry. Uh, Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is distance learning addition. Distance learning such as during COVID is no longer available by family preference, that's an addition.
Is that, that's a necessary thing? I mean, that's.
I'm sorry.
Uh, that's just something that the whole administration wants to see, is that? I'll make a motion to approve that change.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is personal electronic devices, we should discuss this maybe all at one. This is page nineteen, eighteen and nineteen.
Any other question on medicines, well, that's changing, it's in blue on my copy, but I'm not sure.
Oh.
Is anything changing there?
On the medicine.
Something changing there, Mr. Hofforth?
Well, that's.
Is something changing on the medicine policy? It's in blue here?
It's just, we wanted to clarify who was adding, and I think that's a legal on medication, right? What does it say again?
I'm sorry.
It said, parents must bring medication to the office in the original bottle.
Yeah, and that's, that's a state requirement, that's.
Yeah, it comes from the state, it's like, you can't bring, like, if you have an empty bottle and you can't dump some of your pills in and bring, and you need to bring the actual bottle.
So is that a new policy? I mean, we just need to add that in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it is, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so I guess we're on seventeen then. Do we have a motion to approve the modification under medicine?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Okay, now we're on personal electronic devices. My only concern is that parents having to pick up the device at three thirty. Is the office really closed at three thirty?
That part isn't a change, I mean, them picking up the phone after school.
That's not a change?
That part isn't, no, the parents always had to come and pick up the phone for the kid, yeah.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, once they had it taken away.
And the office really closes at three thirty?
In fact, we did change that up a little bit, no.
No, it doesn't close at four thirty, basically.
Yeah, it closes like four thirty, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think three thirty just meaning, you know, after, yeah, yeah.
After school.
We can reword that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's always been part of it. We did, in fact, we did change it up a little bit that the first, I believe the first offense, the student can take it themselves. It's after the first offense that the, the parent will have to come.
And how do we count them, is that by semester or by year?
By each time it happens.
Like, so I did it in one semester, one semester, one semester, okay, so per year?
Yeah.
Is there any exceptions for being able to use cell phones in class for certain things? Like, I don't know if they use it for multimedia classes or, so is there exceptions where they're, you know?
There's a couple, like, um, the photography class, they're going to have to probably use the cameras on their phones. So there is going to have to be some exceptions and, and the teacher will let us know and let the kids know. So yeah, there's going to be some times where they may have to.
I'm just concerned, like, so, let's say I'm walking to my class where I have to have my phone and I'm, or I'm leaving my class where I have to have my phone and someone sees me in the hall and now I'm in violation of it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, all they, if they say, you know, I had to have it for the class, all they got to do is check with that teacher at that point. I mean, that's a pretty simple check.
Can we add that verbiage in here somewhere though, is, like, except for the, um, except for the permission of the teacher or something like that?
Yeah, like, classrooms requiring.
Discretion of the teacher, something.
Classrooms requiring the use of, use of devices will be granted an exception?
And then, can we make this per semester? I don't know, I'm not here every day, so I don't know if it's a huge issue.
Can kids use their, look at their phone when they're at their locker? No?
Yeah, that's, we're trying to get away from that. Last year there was, they went to no cell phones. This is something that teachers push for, it's not, like, it doesn't bother me in my office. It, it's a, I mean, it's just an epidemic. Like, it's, it's in their pocket. They get Snapchats and, I mean, when kids have lost their phone, it sits on the desk and it's just, zzz, 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 zzz. So I, you know, it's a concern of teachers, just how can they focus on the classroom?
I mean, I do think it's fair to not, unless it's a class that you can have your cellphone in, to not have your cellphone in it.
We have walked this back quite a bit, last year it was, you know, the laptop phone. Second one with ISS, the third one with OSS. And I, you know, I called parents last year and they were like, what? And they were pretty upset, and I'm like, you know what it is, that, that applied the lab to really fast. So we tried to walk this back and we're, we're giving some time today or during the classroom, during the school year this year, during class. During the school day, during lunch, they're going to have some free time, they can use their phone. So they can check that, understand they have live students, so. But this is something that teachers have requested, they, they don't want. I mean, we actually even talked about having pockets in the classroom, we're like, we don't want them. Down the league in their locker, and all our lock, all our lockers are locked.
I was wondering if, like, they get in trouble if they're looking at their phone at their locker?
So.
And not in the classroom?
Yeah, so, we don't, we don't want them looking at their phone, we want them, you know, to get three minutes to lock, reach the class.
Okay.
Um, also, Mr. Gerth, he actually was able to get two laptop carts this year. Thirty laptops and a cart. So if there's a teacher that needs an electronic, can get it in the lab, now we have a cart. So there's lots of electronics, so.
So do we have a, a motion on this?
Do you want that teacher approved, Mary?
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended changes. But then adding above first offense, except with the, no. Something about with the exception of teacher's approval or classroom approval.
I wrote classrooms requiring students to use their phones would be the exception.
Perfect.
I'll second that. And then, I'm sorry, I would like also to say that the, I, I don't like the office closes at three thirty, as if, like, if I get there at four thirty or four o'clock, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to change three thirty to four thirty on third, fourth and fifth events.
Second that.
Johns?
Yes.
Munios?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, um, removing, sorry, I'm on proper attire. It used to say on the second offense, the principal or teacher will retain the clothing until the end of the school year. Under proper attire and appearance, because twenty. So is there a motion to remove that?
I like that motion.
Is there a second? Here, I can show you. I don't know if it here.
It's not on ours.
Okay.
It's funny. You see the principal will keep the clothing? Is that what it says?
Yeah, it says the principal will keep the clothing. It's in red.
Oh, on the second offense, the principal teacher will retain the clothing until end of school year. So it says the principal teacher.
Yeah.
I did.
Is there a second?
Here, to leave it in there.
Go, take it.
I'll second it.
John's?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. The last one is semester test exception, exemption, and removing that, they are no longer exempt from semester tests. Is that based upon absences? Removing the whole semester test exemptions, right? And if they want to give a semester test, they do it so in their classroom during normal time?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the removal of the semester test exemption? Yep.
So no matter what, they have to take their semester test? No matter what, they have to take their semester test now? Is that what that's?
Only if the teacher wants to get one. And so, it was just so brainy, and the other part that you can't see is was there, yeah, every class was required to take one. So it loaded up some teachers and not others, it were required classes, so if you got elected, you didn't require to get one, and...
Gotcha. I'll make a motion to remove that portion?
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
John's?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Banana?
Yes.
Tyler, our wall, sorry.
Yes. Okay. That got through one and two of my messages. Uh, we have for number three and four, the school fishing committee and the cultural improvement committee. I am going to table those until next month. We do need to get those, um, going. But, um, please consider being on one of those committees, and we will discuss it at the next meeting. Moving to new business, electronic version of the board policies. I would like to see electronic version, so that I know that things are consistent. I know that, um, Mr. Tyler Daniel sent me a copy of electronic, his version of the policy, and I didn't have that same age, and like, it wasn't even the same format. His was like question and answer type stuff. Um, so I just think it makes sense to get it electronic.
Yes, please. Mine was the big bun, dusty bun here that said needs updating, so, and you don't have.
He's, yeah, I mean, it's, um, Dustin's a lead reader, so we need to make...
Need to make copies? Okay, I can bring mine. But, but mine is the updated... Oh, yeah. No, I think his is old, too old.
Yeah, his is old.
He is as old, too.
We had to say...
But mine isn't updated for the last policies that have been passed since I've been on the board.
John, three, you did it?
Three, I think, yeah. So we can discuss that more at the next meeting, but we do that, I know that that's probably putting a large string on our staff, especially Mr. Gorki, so, you know, it's not of urgent, yeah, it's not of urgency, it's not an urgent thing, but... Um, busing to and from daycares. This is, uh, mine. I've been approached by several daycares, um, wondering if there's any way that we can bus just to the daycares that have so many students, uh, that are, that can't under law, put that many people in one vehicle to get them to school or home from school, and, or have young, very young children or babies that can't, put them, um, load them up either, so... I don't really know. I said I'd refer...
What I would like to know is what daycares and how many students, and then maybe we can work something out if you guys, if you approve it.
Um, I know that Kristen Amundsen, I don't know how many stu, I don't know how many she has, she's quite a few.
I know she has, because my son goes there, she has five or six. She does have one family that they did sign up for the after-school program because of the no busing, that they would maybe change their mind, but...
This is Beth, and I feel like we either have in-town buses or we don't. I don't think that we, I don't think it's a good idea if we start making exceptions, because at what point do we stop?
Right. How many families are signed up for the after-school program?
Um, I think right now there's eleven kids that, that went, parents went on and did that pre-registration, but I think we only have paperwork, like, they've actually turned in their paperwork from last, say, six, and I, I'm not sure I'm telling, because I didn't check today or yesterday, but I think it was six last time I checked.
So that book grant that was given for that, right? Can it only be used for that?
With the, you know, is it possible, I, I really don't know what our bus situation is, especially with our bus drivers and the routes already being established around the country. Is it possible to have, um, like, um, a place, like, three different spots, the bus picks up? So we're not doing, like, a whole route, we're picking up once in the Myers addition, once in over here, and once over here. There's three stops, either you're there at whatever time it is, eight oh five, or you're not.
I am opposed to that idea.
Okay, what did she say?
She depose the idea.
Um, how, like, are the rural bus routes, they're completely full?
Yeah, they're full.
The, the buses?
And I guess, I think we should just state, the reason why the rural buses run is because those are reimbursed...
Correct.
By the state, and the in-town are not.
Correct.
I, I do feel bad about it, I, I would love to be able to say, but I, I have to agree with Steph that, and luckily the, the city is putting in the safe routes to school now, so there is like a safe walk, a safer walking path to and from school, at least to the south, um, to the north, I guess it gets you over the tracks. Yeah, I, it's disappointing to have to say no, but I guess with no buses, we really don't have an option, right? I mean, unless we want to table it, we're looking at...
We would have a bus, it's just trying to find a bus driver, it's whatever you guys decide. We'd have to try to work it out. I don't have an extra bus driver right now.
I guess, like I said at the last meeting, I would like to see something for the winter time. Um, I guess, so maybe we could table it a month, and then see if we get that bus, and see if, um... Are there any grants that can be written for something like that? I have no idea.
I think the main thing would try to find a bus driver, and, and that's what I could do. You know, see if we can find, are you thinking November first through March first? Or is that what you're probably thinking, if I can?
But I mean, I like Nicole's idea, too, of just the three stops. That's so easy, so, and then if that's the case, then you can definitely do it here, huh?
Right.
Because before there was like ten to twelve stops, right? I mean, they, they were stopping at every block, type deal?
Right. We're getting calls to stop frequent, yes. So, yeah, we're trying to get it to the point that it was just point A, point B, point C, so everyone would meet us there. We were trying to do that before COVID.
Well, you do have two people that sit on city council here, too, so I mean, if we need to come up with some sort of safe area in the city, um, and have those three designated points, I think that's something that we would definitely... Even something like that. We do have funding available for infrastructures such as that, so...
That's a great idea.
Unfortunately, it does us no good right this time.
Right. So it's not something that, so are we searching for a bus driver? I guess that's probably where we need to leave this at.
So I do think that the after-school program, while it is great, it... For working parents, you're gonna be paying for both daycare and the after-school program. Because it, it's not like a true CLC where you have summer and year-round CLC or during the school year. It is just during the school year. It is not during Christmas breaks, it's not during any of the days that you leave early. So no parent is going to give up their spot at a daycare in Surrey because it's impossible to get back in. So not only are you gonna pay a hundred and fifty dollars for the after-school program, but then also you're at least another hundred and fifty dollars for your daycare.
Yeah, I agree, that's, that, that was the problem with the, the after-school program, too. And I understand why it had to be done that way. I'm assuming that we can't do after-school, you know, the early hours, because we need to have a teacher there, and teach those over the teach professional days. But it does leave a parent lacking, where you, you know, what do you do on those days?
I think it's really hard, especially because not everybody does the Facebook thing. And so to put it on Facebook two weeks before school starts that there's gonna be no in-town buses, that's hard for parents to rearrange their schedule when they were thinking, okay, last year we didn't have buses because of COVID, we get that, but this year it's gonna be back, but then we're told only two weeks before, that's hard, too.
Well, would we have money for a bus driver and a bus? Because if we don't have the money, I guess, it's not really a decision.
I think that, um, if we gain a bus driver, we could probably work some things out. We could probably do a few things, I have a few things I can think of that we can do that could probably help get the money. Um, just trying to find a bus driver. I know we have bus license, but we were, we don't wanna drive, because we have way too much work to... Just trying to find a bus driver, and, and I could put some fills, and I've been trying since last year to, to get a, another bus driver, and had no luck. But yeah, we can make things work, we can move a few things around, and just whatever you guys decide.
If we ended up making those, you know, spots to pick up, would we need a second bus driver, or we wouldn't?
We would need another bus driver.
You'd still need a bus driver?
One route, they don't get him till eight twenty, eight twenty-ish, eight twenty-five, he's full.
And they start bussing at seven, is that right?
Uh, he goes out about twenty-two, seven.
Yeah, okay.
What's the earliest one that gets back?
Eight, so that one could drop off and go out and pick up. Depending on how many students, eight, eight oh five, so he could. And he, I'm gonna meet with him on Monday, but I'm just trying to think of how many students at those spots would need to be picked up. He'd probably only have time to go out and pick up one spot. Unless, like you said, unless it's just one spot, it would be pretty fast, like, car, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying car, but if it's just one spot there, then it can pick up that.
I'm thinking Hope Lutheran Church would be one.
Right.
And possibly, like, the post office area, if we can designate, get a cop over there, and...
I think that would work, if we would just have one spot here and...
Even two spots for now to start off.
Right, right, what, what I'm saying is one spot in this section, one spot in another section. I think that would work.
And would drop off be the same way, like, you drop off in those sections?
Right.
Would they, and then with that, with drop offs, I know we had issues because, you know, we had to keep so many students in school, so how would drop offs work, then? Would it be a, would, would they?
Before school, I think that we would be able to work it out. After school, it'd be tough.
Because then they're, they, they would need to... They would need, we couldn't do drop offs.
I'd just need time to figure it out.
Right.
Right, and, and that's, and that's the deal, is that if we drop them off at, like, Hope Lutheran, they're unresponsible to get home by themselves. I don't think that they would pick them up.
They would be walking?
Yeah, I think they'd walk home, would they?
Probably, probably walking home from the school, which is a much further walk.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to be a certain age or with someone, I think, in order to be, you know, you can't have your kindergartner alone, being dropped off at Hope Lutheran Church, but...
I just wonder if we aren't opening the door up to shoot ourselves in the foot or end up creating more issues and problems with, you know, whether it be unhealthy parents or not doing this right, or not doing that right, or, um, catering to, you know, certain neighborhoods or that type of thing, I guess.
I think as a parent of a child who's not driving yet, I would make it work to get my child, if I did before school, to that spot on time. If not, then I know that it's my responsibility, and same with walking home. As a parent, I know that I'm having my child walk to where they need to go.
So instead of the post office, I, I'm just, um, that, the park, parking area right north of the cemetery along Pleasant Avenue, there's a big, obviously, there's the Silver Springs Park right there, and walking path. Um, kinda right at the corner of Fourth and Pleasant. Yeah, they could just, I mean, and then at least parents could sit there, too. The post office would, that was a terrible idea.
One of the daycares I approached was on the other end. They had approached me was on the other end of town, kinda by the baseball diamond, in the park.
Yeah, so that would just be straight up Fourth then, from there.
Oh, okay.
So it would be a three-block walk home.
But?
But it wouldn't be an eight-block walk.
Sure.
And a parent could be sitting in that parking lot, and then that would alleviate congestion here. I don't know, just, I, like, we have a week to go before school starts, and trying to make this work probably isn't the most timely idea. Is it worse in the morning or the afternoon for drop off and pickup? Like, it's caused congestion?
We have more students after school that need a ride. Um, like you said, I can look at whatever you'd like, but I can look at October to November, so we have time to get those spots, um, probably kind of driver. Whatever you would, whatever you're gonna decide, I'll work hard to, but like, as John said, it's gonna be tough next week starting school, but, you know, if we can do the winter months, or, like I said, you, I will try my hardest to do whatever you guys...
Uh, let's hear from Mrs. Vellbo.
Okay, I will say that I think the drop off and...
Oh, I will say that I think the drop off and the pickup went a lot faster and a lot smoother this last year with all the buses. And we were out there a fraction of the time. The kids were gone and taking care of, by whoever it may be, but it was a lot smoother than a lot of these parents are making it. So, at least for our end.
I think that the concern is less about the congestion and more about how do I get my kid while I'm working to and from school?
Right. I would also be really nervous if my child on a bus with, like, thirty other kids in it and just be like a pretty girl. There's no one there, for sure, watching them. Being on the drop off, like, in charge. Not knowing what all these other kids. That'd be my worry. I have a seven-year-old, I'm worried.
What's your worry?
If I remember right, I think Mr. Johnson, he ran the route last, he did three stops generally after school, and he would come back?
Right, three stops, but he, he worked that whole area, you know what I'm saying? So he did his job with one stop.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, he couldn't fit all the kids on the bus.
Right, oh, right, we had, we, yes.
I think the meeting, if you went that way, the meeting spot between Silver Springs and the north side would just be, you'd get more kids if you could fit on the bus. I would guess.
Our, our bus was full three times.
Yeah.
Why don't, you know, maybe the best thing to do is to see what you could come up with for ideas?
Try to get a bus driver, try to, oh, just see what's out there.
See what's out there, e, even for ideas on, if it's not going to work after school, you know, maybe there's no sense in dealing with it before school, like, you know? Come to us with whatever. Okay, um, the last thing was a tuition appeal. There were, we had denied a tuition agreement. Um, they appealed it, um, they had asked for it, then it was set aside, and we're all gathering information on it. They, um, opted to go to private school in my, so the tuition agreement is no longer needed, so that was the conclusion of that one. With that, I'll, I can add more to it during.
I'll make that motion, too.
I'll second.